I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a public hearing tonight, local law, number three, retirement center program for 2002. Does anybody wish to address the board at this time? All you people that want to retire are voting no. Nobody yells at you, vote no.
All we gotta do is not enact this law.
It's not very good either.
There being no one wishing to address the board at this time, we close the public hearing. Comments from the public? Anyone who wants to address the board at this time, you'll have a chance at the end of the meeting. Minutes of the previous meeting of July 1, a special meeting of July 8th and 11th, 2002. You all have copies?
Make a motion when you accept the minutes as written.
Second. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Bills?
Does we want to remind the board of the supplemental list of the bill?
Yeah, I saw. Scary, too. What would be?
Second.
Motion made and seconded to pay the bills, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Correspondents?
We have one piece of correspondence that was hand-delivered to the office today. It was addressed to the entire board. As a taxpayer and law owner in the village of Rouse's Point, I would like to make it known that I am in favor of developing the land off Rock Street. The eight lots could bring in about a million dollars' worth of assessments. These lots and streets have been on the village map since 1962 as a subdivision. Therefore, I believe they should be grandfathered in. I have been told that there is a footage problem on the Rock Street end of the development. I hope this can be resolved, keeping in mind the loss of the tax money for the village, the town, and the school if this land is not allowed to be developed. Sincerely yours, Marcel H. Laine.
Where are we on that? I believe it's in the two lawyers' hands. Our lawyer and the lawyer for Delioz. Or that, if I said it right, it's Delioz. I apologize, Delioz. We are still waiting to hear from them, far as I know. Is that right, Deb?
Correct. Mr. Murnane has all the information. Far as I know, he's supposed to be contacting Mr. Farrow.
There is, apparently, according to our attorneys, a discrepancy on the... On one end of it. I'm not quite aware of what it is. That's what we stand on.
There's really nothing we can do until they get back to us.
We're certainly not against developing property. I would make that clear to everybody.
Have you heard on that, sir? Certainly. My name is Gary Farrow. I represent Mr. Delioz. And I'm sorry I'm late. I didn't hear the beginning of the discussion. But what I did do this afternoon was a little research to find out the status of that street. I'm not sure if the village is aware that it's your street already. This is a subdivision that was approved in 1962, '63. And there was a deed dated June 8, 1962, volume 457, page 410. So it was dedicated, belongs to the village, and it's all done. I'm not sure what the village can do at this point to change the size of the road or ask that subdivision to come into conformity with any new rules because it's not the developer's responsibility at this time as far as your acceptance of that road. It's been done, has been done for years. They've been taxed as subdivided approved lots and been paying taxes as subdivided approved lots, not unapproved property, for 30 years. So I don't know if everybody was aware of that. Sometimes these things get old and they get lost in the shuffle. And I wasn't know... The correspondence I've had with your village attorney, Mr. Murnane, seemed to indicate that there was a subdivision approval process that needed to be completed and things needed to be submitted. And I can't find why that should be. What I have is a completed subdivision that's been approved, accepted, and acted upon. I understand that the village has put a utility line down through there and water sewer through a good part of it already. The road itself is not there, but the subdivision process and the approval process is complete to the best of my knowledge. So I thought I should share that with you. I don't know if you're all aware of that at this point. But from the tenor of Mr. Murnane's letters to me in the past as we've tried to move forward with this, it didn't seem that he was aware of that.
Have you spoken to Mr. Murnane about this?
I got this as after. And I have. And I didn't know if he would be attending the meeting this evening or not.
Mr. Farrow, I think there are just really two questions that you are pending on. There's number one is that the, at the very east end of the right-of-way is only 40 feet. It would affect the size of the road or not, which would simply affect the... So I don't think... Personally, that's a big issue. And the other issue, I think, is up at the western end. There seems to be some controversy as to whether or not it can go through. What kind of turnaround it has to be.
You mean whether or not there's an easement that prohibits it from being a through street?
You looked it up of the...
We've looked at that. And Mr. Murnane sent me a letter where he agreed with our analysis that there was no proper action by the board or by the village board at that time. It was done by an official without any approval, without any resolution. And that whatever agreement was done was really an accommodation for utility access to that owner, and it was not a block. I have his opinion letter that states that's not an issue. That's a couple months old. I didn't think that was still an issue.
Hopefully you and Mr. Murnane can get this thing settled so they go ahead.
Would love to.
Is that something you're going to be able to resolve or would we have to go to like administrative law judge to make a determination on this?
What is the issue that would have to be determined?
I thought the issue was that if we decided to bring a street in, that the property had to revert back to the original owner's zone. It's the way I read the paper. Do you have a copy of this paper here where it's highlighted? It's from February 12, 1962?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, that was the original agreement. I believe that was filed for the proposed... From the way I read it, it looks like there's a holdup. If the street goes through, then the property goes back to the original Leganard. So to me, I mean, you almost have to be an attorney to understand this. You interpret it one way, then the other lawyer interprets it differently. So it's like, what do you do when you come to an impasse? I guess you have to kick it upstairs to an administrative law judge?
It would be an administrative judge.
Well, what kind of judge would it be?
It would have to go to Supreme Court. Are you... You're talking about an issue now that... You're concerned about the issue where it was going to dead end and not be a through street?
Yes.
Well... You're saying there's reverter language in some agreement or approval that would send it back to the owner?
To the original Leganard property. They switched property to Leganards with the Schinderbergs to accommodate their development?
Well, the deed to the street didn't come from them. The deed came from Leeward, Minette, William Pollak, Clara Pollak, Don Pollak. So there's nothing in that chain of title that should affect the street itself. If there's something between Leganard and Schinderberg, that's different, but it shouldn't affect the street ownership.
I don't think it does. The thing that affects is the die-in of Phillips Avenue.
Why should that...
If I am... Maybe I'm...
Can I go back to my original question? Have you met at all with Mr. Murnane or has it been a paper correspondence?
No, we've talked a number of times and exchanged a number of letters. His last letter to me indicated that that issue was not an issue, that he felt that the easement restriction, which prevented the connection of the road, was not proper, was not authorized, was basically without authority, and could be ignored at the present time by the board.
Wouldn't it be possible for the two of you to begin again with this new information that you just had today? So that we can maybe look at everything in its entirety and come up with a decision for these people who are waiting one way or the other? Would that be something that would be possible?
Absolutely.
Because I'm certainly not aware of what his correspondence has been with you. And I think, as Brian was saying earlier, the two of you probably have a much better chance of working this out than we do here with you this evening. So if that's at all possible, I would be very appreciative. I mean, we all would, if you could perhaps somehow even Mr. Murnane.
We're not against it. It's just that we have to make sure that we go about it the right way. You have a disagreement with obviously Mr. Murnane?
Well, I'm not sure Mr. Murnane was aware of this. Because he was talking about before approval of a subdivision could occur, before a street dedication could occur, he wanted the following things. And he was basically giving a shopping list from the present subdivision ordinance. This research indicates that the subdivision was approved back in '62 or '63, and the road was already dedicated. It's your road, not theirs. You own it, according to this.
If you'd enlighten that, if you could, Mr. Murnane, I would be a lot more comfortable with what the two of you can work out.
As soon as possible to get this settled as quick as possible, please.
Absolutely.
I would appreciate it very much. I'd like to give you this so you can have this, so you can read this, too. It's from 1962, and it lists all the property and it's highlighted really where it pertains. And you almost have to be an attorney to interpret it.
Well, I should be able to.
Well, I mean, for us to read it, I mean, it's like, you know...
I understand. No, I'd be happy to do that also.
Okay, so you can take this.
Mr. Murnane also has a copy, an entire packet.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to address the board this time? If not, report to mayors and trustees. First item on the agenda. Thank you, Mr. Farrow.
Thank you. When's your next board meeting?
Two weeks.
No, okay. Oh, sorry.
First week in August. First Monday in August.
I'll make sure I meet with them before that?
Thank you.
Thank you.
First thing on my agenda, surplus vehicles. I have a correspondent from the chief of police surplusing a 1995 Chevrolet Caprice Classic, four-door sedan, and a 1982 Chevrolet Caprice, four-door sedan. Those are now surplus. Tomorrow morning, I would like to move in front of the village office for sale time. When do we have to set down? What should that line? We can't set that for one second.
Do you want these advertised like you did the others? Do you want them advertised in the paper?
Please.
I've already had people into, bid on these.
Now, the other vehicles that we surplus, are we still carrying them on the insurance or are we taking them off?
Can't take them off till we take the plates off them.
Well, we're supposed to have the plates off by now.
They should be all off. The big gun put them off.
Okay.
For one time, they took the striking off that.
Yeah.
ES Court.
ES Court, ES Court, the ES-10.
ES-10. I think ES-10's the only one that's got the stickers on. I think stickers on.
Get the plates into the office and get them off the insurance. There's no sense of us paying insurance on those vehicles.
They'll be optimal on everything.
Thank you very much.
Continue, what day do you want to have the bid open?
Our first meeting in February. I'll be away August.
How about Friday before so that I can make you aware of it? Like 10:00 morning?
Thank you.
What are they worth, anything? I mean, a patrol car must be worth a thousand bucks?
Five.
Oh, five?
Five.
Oh, no, I like more.
I know.
That's what we get for them.
Okay. Second item on the agenda is... The village of Rouse's Point is going to sponsor a band concert presented by the Straw Hatters. That's Wednesday, August 7, at 7:00 p.m., outdoors at Cedarhead Nursing Home. Certainly, everybody's invited to come. Please bring a chair. Last year, when we had the band concert, it was poorly attended. And they certainly, if anybody had heard them during the fourth celebration here, they were great. And the third thing I got on the agenda, it gives me great pleasure tonight to appoint Mr. John Huckrow, general chairman of the Fourth of July for 2003. John came and offered his services for that, and I certainly appreciate it. That means celebration will continue. Thank you, John. And I believe that's it for me. Trustee Menard?
My first item is I'd like to make a motion that we surplus the two vehicles and that we authorize the village clerk to publish the advertising.
Second, sir.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion?
Where would they park them?
In front of the village office on the side.
On the side of the village office?
Yeah, knocked out in the road over here on the... You know, that parking spot right on the front.
Yeah, right next to the wide lane. Yeah. No.
Any other discussion?
On the side of that office.
On the other side.
This side of that office. Is that it, the little outboard in there?
Before the porch of the garage used to be.
You know, that's where they're doing the work though, right there.
That might not affect that. It'll be down the same. Any other discussion? All those in favor, vote by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
My second item on the agenda tonight is to request an executive session for police investigation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, roll call vote. Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Huckrow? Trustee Panfield?
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
And that's all I have for this evening.
Wow, thank you. Trustee Menard? Trustee Huckrow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First item on the agenda is to request an executive session to discuss administrative personnel.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, roll call vote. Trustee Menard?
Aye.
Trustee Huckrow?
Aye.
Trustee Panfield?
Aye.
Trustee Jefferson?
Aye.
And the mayor votes aye.
Second item, you should have copies of New York Rural Water Association certificates to Eugene O'Clair and Mike Riley for attending workshops on wastewater and offer to initiate themselves the water plant. And congratulations to them. They got five contact hours for participation. Out of order, but you should also have a copy of the certificate to Carol Hanfield from attendance at the local government records office's workshop in Alexander Baker weeks ago. And congratulations to Carol for participation in that. Eric, you have a brief...
150 tons of concrete to talk about? Hopefully I don't have 150 tons. Since the last I was here, we solved the subgrade problem we were having. Got the work in slab down. They got real busy, put the rebar in. And last Saturday, we put in 550 cubic yards of concrete. It's coming along good now, now that they're up out of the ground. They're cleaning the site up real well. Today, they were in there removing and trucking out some of the stumps and debris so the site's getting cleaned up real good. They were a little confused about what they could use for backfill material today, so I told them they're gonna put in what they're putting in anymore because they're putting in organic and soft, compressible material. I gave them a note, a little letter, saying that they need to follow the specs and use the appropriate backfill around the foundation. They'll be shifting out, they're 10 days in and 4 days out. They'll be shifting out this Wednesday. Next week, we'll start seeing the actual pillar of the water tower start to go up once we start going up with that. The first lift will be probably a week, and then after that, we're going to be going to a lift every day. So within two weeks, we'll start seeing that jump up eight feet every day. So that's where the water tank is. With the plan itself, last Friday, we did dive out on the intake structure, changed one of the screens out, that was still stainless steel screen, and put in one of the copper-clad ones that the DPW has made up. The copper-cladding makes a great difference in the amount of zebra muscles that are adhering to the screens out there. The two that are already copper-clad really had no zebra muscles on it. The one that we brought in that was stainless steel had approximately 1,000 zebra muscles per square meter. And that's a medium, not quite high, density, but they're all juveniles, and it looks like you're having another spike in the population. So we reviewed with the DPW, and they're going to continue adding more copper to the screens to inhibit the zebra muscles from adhering to them. They don't like copper. Something if copper spits out. John Carr was supposed to give me some notes to give you input on where he was with the plant and continuing with the transmission line, but I didn't touch bases with him, and unfortunately, he didn't fax me anything, so I can't add anything from John Carr at this point. Any questions?
Somebody asked me how tall the water tank was going to be, and I just couldn't remember.
143, 144, in that range. I don't have an exact number. It's gonna be a bit taller than the existing water tower up there.
That's what I told him, just a little bit taller.
There's no update from John to call on Rentwood Street?
I don't have any updates.
Captain Dan Callman Warren. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Also, I'd like to request a waiver of the open container law for Carol Hanfield's family for a family reunion at the Civic Center Pavilion on July 20.
Second, sir. Motion made and seconded, any discussion? Mean no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
I'd like to announce the rebirth of Farmer's Market in Rouse's Point. Hopefully it worked this time. We tried this about almost 20 years ago. And it worked for a few weeks, and then it just kind of petered out. I think maybe with a little organization and if it gets out over hometown cable, that maybe we'll get a little more publicity, get some people involved. I'd like to get some posters up, maybe down at Marina's, and so on and so forth. We're going to begin on July 26 and continue through Saturday, the 21st of September. Now, we're talking Fridays and Saturdays only. Fridays from noon till 5:00, Saturdays from 9:00 till 2:00. We are not charging the vendors anything for participating. This is a donor-sponsored activity, and we just don't feel so we should be charging them. It's going to be outside. It's going to wind up right across the front of the parking lot. We're asking anybody that's interested in participating. We found somebody already today that was interested. We're interested in fresh produce or farm-type products, maybe something like that. Actually, if the Girl Scouts want the Wholey Food Sale in conjunction, that would be a great thing. And then there might be some other things that people would be interested in buying. The only thing I would like to ask is anybody that is going to participate, please register by phone or just walk into the village office so we know who's going to be there. And we'll just see how it's gonna go. Typically, we ask vendors to have a peddler's permit to operate the doors. This is not a typical peddler's activity that happens day after day and goes house to house and all that kind of thing. So we're... I'm going to ask the board if they'd waive peddler's permit for this activity. Need a motion on that, I guess, sir?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Now, will this be rain or shine?
It will be rain or shine. If you want to... Saw your tomatoes out there in the rain? Wonderful. I'll come down by some. But I'll come down anyway. And we will have a large sign. Mike O'Brien and Mike Lindor are going to make some of these TV-type signs, put it out on the street so that people will be aware when they go by. Chief Craig, just makes the attempt, so you can see any problems with that. Okay. I'd like to... Hope to wait for the last sign. Thank Bob Bart for finding the funding to take care of the new lights we have downtown. Benny Arrows for finding the lights, and the guys for putting all of the street lights back up and getting our street so they look nice. And again, I'd like to remind people that these lights were purchased at no cost to the village's taxpayers. Am I correct, Bob? It's still a grant that Bob was able to find for us, and I really, really appreciate that. And I have heard, so far, good things about the lights. I hope that's all we hear, good things about the lights. Okay, and then again, thanks for everybody for that. And along with that, I'd like to, we never did, thank the ARC for participating in filling the baskets and bringing them along our streets. They look really nice this year, too. The weather's been perfect, and they're full, and I don't see any weed zone. And something that we talked about at the meeting the other day, the 11th, I guess it was, we're not 100% sure at this point, but it looks as though there will be a carnival here at the rec center on the 8th, 9th, 10th, and 11th of August. It's a company that's been here several years ago, and they seem to have a nice selection of rides and games and things like this. For that particular weekend only, we're going to ask the Farmer's Market to run up along the south side of the rec center. We don't have the details on the carnival workout yet, but as soon as we do, we'll get the information out. And I understand that they're going to be quite good at appetizing themselves. And again, I talked with Chief Craig, and we didn't see any serious problems resulting from it. We don't see anything done, I do it.
No, I don't think so.
And that's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Trustee Huckrow. Trustee Panfield?
The first item I have tonight is a packet that I had given each of you earlier today on the planning board. Mr. Murnane had asked us to put together some specific information so that he could finish up writing the local law to actually establish the planning board. And in talking to NICOM about this, I got the advice that it would be better to do one local law which establishes the board, and then as I go to the bottom, actually assigning the duties of the planning board can be done in a separate local law, and that was their recommendation to do that. So the first page is something which would basically be the organization based on New York State village law. And then I had also, based on the information that George had given me from his NICOM trip, put together some of the ideas that we could start looking at in terms of what we want to actually give them as a target for what we want them to do. And so the first page would really be the first local law establishing it, and then the rest of the reading material would be giving us an idea of what we might want to work with them to set up so that they could actually start working it.
Mr. Murnane, go ahead and write his role out?
He should be able to work from what's on the first page.
We have to authorize that? You make a motion for that?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we authorize them to ask Murnane to begin to write the local law to establish a planning board.
I'll second that. Motion made and seconded, any more discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
I'd also like to make a motion to authorize them, perhaps, to put one more ad in the paper and also announce for Calvin as well that it's not too late. People are interested in becoming a member of the planning board. I do have a list of people that I'm working from, but I would like to give everyone an opportunity. Perhaps someone still has not heard about this yet. Give them an opportunity if they'd like to join on and be a member. So I would like to make a motion to authorize them, that you can run an ad in the paper that we are establishing a planning board and letting people know that if they are still interested in it, contact the village office. Just to give people one last chance.
Second. Motion made and seconded, now we got a discussion. There being no more discussion, all those in favor, vote by the use of sign of aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
The second thing that I have is actually a memo from our sen dealing with property maintenance. And I wanted to bring this to your attention this evening because in looking it over, I think this seems very lengthy, but I think that a lot of what is in here may be a very good idea. We do have a few, not very many. All in all, I think the village looks very good. We do have a few properties in town which are habitually poorly kept. And I think that if we could perhaps look at this memo and put something together that would work for Rouse's Point, it might be a very good idea to help people perhaps to maintain some of the properties that, again, are habitually overgrown and so on. It's something I think that really bears thinking about in terms of the code that we have and what we could add to it.
Just before the Fourth of July, we talked to Mike O'Brien, and he went around a couple spots in the village and tuned up, fine-tuned some of the lots that were having a problem with soda.
Right.
And I don't think it's our responsibility to cut their lawn, you know? So I think if we sent him a letter or, you know, enacted this, that...
At least if we did cut it, we could charge them for it. At least if we did cut it, we could charge them for it, if, you know, they don't respond.
If that's within our law, you know, which I think, uh, which I think is an excellent idea.
I do too, so, and I don't, I, this, this does seem kinda lengthy when I was reading it over the other day, it seems, but at least we could take, knock out of it, that might be appropriate for Ross's point. Bob, did you get a copy of this?
Can we give that to Murnane?
Just to bring you up to date, just to bring you up to date, when you were saying, go on the property and cut it, we legally, we legally can't go on that property. That's the Fourth Amendment, okay?
Well...
But what you can do is, you can put that in your, in the zoning.
Yes.
Which, that's what I would do, I would put that, not in the village law, put it in your zoning law. For, you know, there are certain things in that zoning law that cover junk and whatnot, but it doesn't cover, uh, grass and so, certain, you know, those other things. And that's, I didn't, from just listening to you, I agree, that should be in the zoning.
I did think it was written in here though, Bob, that, that, and this is again a closing of Village of Champlain, that...
Doesn't make any difference.
They could actually do that.
Fourth Amendment, you can't go on somebody's property. I can't go on somebody's property, even when I, even when I do the inspections, okay? By law, I have to go on my inspection, yeah, I'm just, I'm just quoting you with, with the, okay? What we were taught in school and all, which is correct also. Uh, yeah, all inspections are done from the street, unless the owner brings you in, or the agent, or the tenant brings you in.
Don't think there's a problem there, Bob. Sorry? That's what we're talking about, stuff that you see from the street. And if we go and put that and maintain it, then what this law does allows us to charge the property owner.
If you see from the street is one thing, but you can't go on the property and maintain it.
Well, here's a law that's been in effect since, uh, 1992, and if it's not been challenged in court, I mean, somebody, this is a local law that's been written. It's law that's been written in past.
Can we, can we get, can we get it in our zoning law?
What you do is, you put it in your zoning law, okay? If they don't do it, then you bring them to court, okay? And then they can be fined. What's your feeling on this, Bob?
Well, you're getting into a civil situation, but I would tend to agree with, with the code enforcement officer, that you just can't go on to somebody's property because you don't like the height of the grass, or the way the bush is shaped, and just do it the way you deem necessary that falls in, in perspective with everything else. I think it could be into the zoning, uh, where you could cite him into court, uh, for the violation, you could have it in the village code, have it in the zoning, you cite him into court for the violation, and then the judge dictates what they will do, and then if they don't do it, the judge, then...
This, uh, this law comes under general references of garbage, refuge, and rubbish, chapter 48, fire prevention and billing code, chapter 60, junk yards, chapter 73, and littering, chapter 75, it's all covered under chapters of laws.
Okay, that's all, that also, that also covered under county law, and that's what the sheriff's department does, but we're, we're talking, I'm understanding, we're talking grass?
Yeah, you're talking grass, you're not talking any one of those things, Chris. You're not talking garbage, you're not talking litter?
Well, I think you need to read through this.
You can't even go on and remove the garbage or the litter. You don't, you can't do it. You can't go on somebody else's property, that's bottom line.
I have a property that's private.
That's the problem.
And what you're saying, that this local law right here for this village is illegal?
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
If the law says that you can go on there, then it's wrong, but I don't believe it says you can go on there. All it's doing is telling you what you shouldn't have, what you can't have.
Could we at least sit down with this, and maybe get something into our zoning code so that we have some sort of recourse? Because again, it's not very many properties, but there are a few, which are really in very poor shape.
I couldn't rewrite him a letter.
100%.
I couldn't rewrite him a letter, not a, in the past, have a...
That's exactly what you gotta do according to this law. You'll have to notify him, and then after 30 days, if no service has been, the, the building inspector is heard of and writes, goes out and pays for protection of violations.
But, you know, the, the, but the sad thing with writing a letter, you can write a letter, they'll cut the law in this month. Two months later, they won't, you know, you keep writing letters, where if you, if you put it in a, uh, in the code that says that the law, that your grass has to be within so many inches, then what you do is you bring them into court, you don't have to keep moving fooling around.
So would your recommendation then just to be, leave things the way that they are?
No, my recommend, I would recommend that what you would do is, you would put it in, in the zoning code, and you would put in whatever the height is you want, okay? It's like, for instance, you can't put shrubbery, and you can't block on the corner of a, of a highway or a street, okay? You have to be back so many feet. Understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
Comes under the same thing as what grass.
Right.
Or property maintenance. You can actually cite them if you really want to, you can cite them under, I think it's 1253 of New York State Building Code. I mean, there's several, several ways you can cite people if you want, you know, really wacko people, if you really wanna make a lot of friends, it's...
But we could do that, now you're saying, we wouldn't even have to enact anything like this.
I'd have to look under 1253, but I believe that it does come in.
Does it say to Murnane?
No, not at all.
Just what I was gonna say.
Maybe, maybe we should send it to him, get an opinion from him.
What is it you're dealing with, and what village, is that Ross's point?
It's a Village of Champlain, it's a property maintenance law.
That's, uh, you know, they can make laws, but, yeah.
But it was drafted by the attorney.
But it doesn't say, I don't believe it says in there that you can go on there and cut it. Shouldn't say you can go on there and cut it.
It does say the inches of the grass will exceed six inches.
Exactly.
It's got everything listed.
Yeah, it tells you the height and all, but then it, there it also...
Maybe that law should be in, in our zoning law.
In your zoning, that's what I'm saying.
So it's not, it's not permitted to exceed six inches.
Well, what, well, what is the enforcement? Is there an enforcement section?
Yes, it goes in here, says after 30 days of enforcement, the building inspector or other duly appointed law enforcement officer of the Village of Champlain should be charged with the duty of administering and enforcing this charter, the, the, the duty of the building inspector to issue a notice of violation.
That's right. Okay. That, that all fits.
That's what I said.
Notice, notice of violation, which you're gonna cite him into court, they ultimately still have to end up before the judge.
Right.
Then, then the judge...
You can't do it.
No, you can't, you can't, as a, as a community or, or, you can't ask Bobby Clark to have his men go cut the grass, you can't do it, you can't send somebody on private...
No, I don't think, but that's not what I'm asking that we do, that was not my point, and I'm sorry if, if, if that's the way it came out, no, that was not my point.
Somebody say, somebody said that, you can go on and cut it, and then you can put it on the taxes, that's what I'm concerned.
No, there are three properties that I'm thinking of in the village specifically, okay? And it would just be nice if we could perhaps somehow get the owners of those properties to keep them up.
I agree.
Better. You know, I think for the people that live near them, I think for the people who walk by them, people who drive by them, people who come into the village, they're, you know, they're, they're probably more than three, but I have three right now that I can think of, and I just think, I mean, it, it's not a huge issue, it's just, it seems like somehow in our zoning code, we should have some recourse.
I agree, 100%.
So, and, and, but I'm not, certainly not saying we should send the DPW workers down and say, go cut the grass, and then we'll charge them, no, 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 no. I mean, obviously there are channels that would have to be followed, but unless we have that in our village code, those channels are not open to us, is that correct?
Exactly.
Well?
Exactly.
So can we sit down and look at this?
Yes, I agree. I, I've been working with the, uh, with the zoning board, and I have been making some changes and whatnot with them, and, uh, there's, we can add, that's another one we can put in there, okay? In fact, if you liked it, we can either, and, uh...
That would be great, okay.
All right.
Um, the last thing that I have this evening is a discussion for the building located at number 5 and number 7 Montgomery Street. We have a, a memo from Mr. Rasko, having inspected the building again, and, um, Bob, would you like to describe the thing, or...
Okay, uh, it's now at the point that, uh, Mr. Menard, actually he called me and asked me to give him a notice that he'd like to take stuff out, so he's going to more or less walk away from it, uh, he's gonna let it go, uh, he's gonna let us handle it, basically, because he didn't, the 20 days he didn't come with it, where he had to have the practical building architect and engineer come, and, uh, so, we wrote the second one, which you're supposed to write out. Now, what the board can say tonight is, if you wanna proceed with that, then what we'll do is, we will have a public hearing. They'll have the public hearing, then after the public hearing, what the board will decide, well, you, you still want to have the building, and if you do at that point, then I will go off.
So I'd like to make a motion to authorize that to advertise for a public hearing.
Motion made in seconded, any discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of the aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Will that be the next meeting, Bob? And that's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Panfield, trustee Jefferson.
Eric, do you have anything to report in the sewer?
Um, one thing we have is that, uh, Doug wanted me to inform the board that a significant industrial user permit was received by the New York State DEC, and has been sent to YF for review. Again, I don't have anything to add from, uh, John Carr, and that's all I have.
Okay, I haven't seen, uh, I haven't been to the sewer plant this week, 'cause I've been out of town. Just a couple things, uh, last week, Mayor Rivers and, uh, Mr. Huckrow and I were at the fire department meeting, and we discussed, trying to see whether they would consider taking over the barbecue for, uh, the next 4th of July celebration. I kinda, I couldn't really get a feeling, some guys were in favor, some guys weren't in favor, but, and we asked them if we maybe could have somebody, you know, organize the car show, so they wouldn't really commit to anything last week, but John seems to think that they're cautiously optimistic that they might be going for it, but... And the other thing is, I had a lot of people approach me, they wanna know what's going on at the store. Now, obviously, there's been some movement in the grocery store. There isn't any, uh, formal announcement, but there is been, has been some work, all the shelves have been taken out, and there's been quite a few trucks coming and going, so there is some activity there, but I really don't have anything to release at this time, just so that people know, you know, what's going on.
It's my understanding, uh, trustee Jefferson, that it is up to the company that's coming in to make the announcement.
I did see that the other day on Save-A-Lot.
Yeah, but that's...
No, no, but I was just saying, just that, but this is the first time I've ever seen one. Says they have over a thousand stores, and they're from the mid part of the country over to the east coast.
Anyway, they will make the announcement of what's going on with that store.
Yep. That's all I have to report today.
Thank you, trustee Jefferson. Deb?
No, I have nothing.
Arsen?
Um, I was talking to our engineer on Friday, and he said, um, him and John Carr are working on the financing for the water project, but in the meantime, he wants me to contact our bond council of the board, $500,000 for interim financing, so I need permission from the board to contact the bond council.
Motion made in seconded, any discussion?
I'd just like to know what kinda interest rates are, I mean, is it set by state, or how does that go?
I don't know, the bank wants... The bank is offering...
There's only a temporary thing, uh, until we get, I think we're, we're applying for Great Water Bond Act money, and that, you pay off, you pay off that bond when we get that money?
I'd be surprised.
Short term? Just go to one bank, or...
No, I'll give it to them.
Any other discussion?
There's only two in the area, I'll give this a four anyway, so...
What bank do you name?
Champlain National Member League.
There being no discussion, all those in favor, vote by your side of the aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. That it? Arsen?
Yes.
Bob?
Nothing at this time, sir.
Bob and Bob.
Yeah, I got one question, if you're, you're talking about, uh, paint, you're, you're filling in today?
That's correct.
What kind of tools you make them fill around that, is, isn't that in the contract that they have to fill it? The clay base are back in there?
Um, what John Carr has in the spec is they can use onsite materials, as long as there's no organics or roots and whatnot in it, and that's what they're having back in there. Um, I have to pull the spec out, but he's calling off, um, just, uh, you've got two listings of the acceptable fill that he will have back in there. Um, the main thing that I was critiquing was that they're putting roots and, um, organics and whatnot, and they don't want that back in there.
No. So, so they're gonna, because they mixed it, they're gonna have to haul materials in, is that what you're telling me?
Yes.
Okay.